And we are live. Alright, thank you for tuning in today. Uh, I'm gonna throw it over to Anna for a brief introduction. Um, as I get this set up in the background, um, hi y'all, I'm Bossier Vincent, I'm a candidate for city council. Uh, I'm also, if any of you know me, I'm also a little bit of a tech guy, so I'm gonna do some techie things and I will be right back.
Yes, thank you Bossier. Bossier is in charge of all the techie things, so I have asked him to tap into his power in order for us to be able to share this conversation um across social networks. Feel free to share this conversation with community. We know that people are not always able to get to all of the events where they are listening to candidates and getting their feedback or being able to ask questions. So we're just doing the work around community building and part of that is um accessibility to information. So by creating something online, it helps to be able to share with one another. So make sure you're sharing it, make sure you are tapping in, asking questions um and making it accessible to as many people as possible because the more we all know, the more we're able to make um an informed decision about this political season. Um, as we are waiting on Bossier, uh, my name is Anna White. I will be serving as a moderator or just um a person that's going to help navigate this conversation. Um, I work with Way With Words Consulting Services, so in this capacity, my hat is simply to serve as a host um to be able to guide the conversation. I'm looking forward to some questions and some comments as we are asking Bossier what his thoughts are, right? So becoming familiar with him sometimes just takes us asking a couple of questions. So I'm not shy about asking the easy questions or the hard questions, so hopefully you guys comments comes in here um as we're having a conversation because that's really the point of this session is to get to know Bossier. And it looks like he is back.
Well, yeah, we got eight people, seven people tuned in, so thank you all for coming in. I'm, I'm excited. And um, I want, I want to go first, I want to shout out Anna White. Um, she is a community leader that I've met here and got a chance to engage with. Um, actually, the first time I met Anna was right around the George Floyd protests. So I want to let people know, like, a lot of history of this work is seeing and recognizing the leaders that have been here doing work. So I want to, you know, start with saying like, I see you, sis, I recognize you and I appreciate the work that you've been doing. Um, and that's, that's gonna be a theme for me, right? Is, 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 I'm not, I'm not coming here like, oh, my idea is from outside, I'm gonna save Harrisburg. Uh, I, I'm saying like, oh hey, I've been listening to the people of Harrisburg and I really want to help.
Well, thank you, because I think part of what we are seeing now is that we're really wor- looking into debunking this myth that Harrisburg cannot work in a space of collaboration, right? There's a ton of examples where we are trying to move away from the silos that are really deteriorating the work that can be done and trying to work in collaboration. So thank you for not only acknowledging the work that I do, but just being very clear that your position is in making sure that uh leadership comes from a space of collaboration. Um, so I do just want to start backing up for those who do not know you, that are tuning in, that are like, how do you say his name? Who is he? What's going on? Could you introduce yourself, give a little bit of background about uh what brought you into Harrisburg, the work that you do here, and then we'll kind of move from there?
Absolutely, thank you. So uh, Bossier Vincent, um, yeah. So I would tell people who mispronounce my name, don't add any extra letters, it's B-A-S-I-R, it's Bossier. Some people try to put an H in there, they put some extra S's, I'm like, nope, just B-A-S-I-R. So uh, appreciate you all for uh taking the time to tune in. Uh, I am not from Harrisburg, I am born and raised in New Jersey. Um, if you want to know, like, my parents were actually, you know, activist engaged, always taught me to engage. My, my parents actually were on city council in the city they were in, um, school board, other, other positions that they helped, you know, support and support around. Um, I moved out here originally, so my background is actually in mechanical engineering. Uh, I've spent the majority of my professional life, uh, that's fifteen years, uh sixteen years, working in manufacturing. Um, and that experience allowed me to learn how to plan and execute plans. I also really got a chance to deep dive into leadership and manufacturing leadership. Uh, the reason why I moved out to this area, I worked for Nestle Purina Pet Care, which was the largest, is the largest pet food company in the world, and moved around to several factories. Uh, believe it or not, I lived in Nebraska before I came out this way. And I actually got a job at the Mechanicsburg factory. And I spent, um, I spent most of my time out there. Um, as I spent time out there, I actually originally lived in Mechanicsburg, but, you know, part of the journey of becoming part of the areas around me, I really found community in Harrisburg. And so I started spending time here, um, myself, my wife, we met a couple, we met some friends that were from here and we actually, I, I, I want to say started, but we actually restarted a group and eventually, which eventually evolved into young professionals of color. Uh, so started that nonprofit, that really tied me into doing a lot of work here in Harrisburg. Um, ever since then, I've just been doing several different types of work to get me involved with the community. I actually worked for a company called Foundry Maker Space and I worked inside Harrisburg's school districts, trying to help support teachers, learn and implement project-based learning. Um, so I spent, uh, spent about two and a half years doing a, a cycle of that work. Uh, then, you know, I actually left Purina. I spent a year really focusing on young professions of color, really focusing on nonprofit. Um, if anyone knew me around that time, that's when I started doing a lot of these informational videos. Um, you know, before then, when I was working with the schools, I started learning about the various comprehensive plans and seeing the connections um with what I used to do in manufacturing and how a city is run. Um, then moved out, then really spent that year focusing. I since went back to manufacturing for a while. Um, I was actually working out of Allentown, that commute started becoming a little bit too much. So then took a job with a company called Pro Rank Academy, who focuses on helping supporting diverse businesses and small businesses and ensuring that they uh can be competitive in a lot of spaces, which is also uh, you know, reference for the city. So that's kind of like my history in a nutshell, leading up until now.
Okay, so I heard manufacturing um background, I heard education and the work that you do with YPOC and kind of disseminating information. Um, I heard a lot of things that relate back to this idea of STEAM and moving things forward from an engineering perspective, even with the work that you do. And engineering is really important, that ability to kind of break things down and disseminate to nothing and then rebuild and knowing all the parts and tools, right? Um, I used to speak to Winnie a lot, shout out to Winnie, and she was saying that hearing in that engineering mindset is really about looking at things on a larger scale, being able to pull it apart, piece by piece, examining the pieces, seeing the functionality of each piece, and then kind of seeing how you can put it together so that it runs smoothly. So anytime I hear about engineer, um, for sure, I'm always like, oh, you guys are really good at like critical thinking or pulling things apart and putting things back together. So, um, I want to talk about your background as it compares to a lot of people saying that, you know, when you are running for something like city council or something in the city, how um separated that is from the work that is to be done and connected with the kiddos, right? The school district, so a lot of times when people bring issues and concerns, people say, oh no, that's a district issue that has nothing to do with me. In your own words and understanding, how do you see the connection between Harrisburg School District and your role um should you be elected to city council?
Yep, so there, there are a couple of different ways to look at that. It, it's, the first way is the, 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 the technicality, right? There is an integration and implementation section of the comprehensive plan, and I always keep coming back to that document, which is a fundamental document, it's in city codes that we should be using it. Um, we should be timed together, um, you know, for, when we first pause, for a moment, I was actually considering running for school board because that is a direct connection. I did, in my time working with the school districts, I actually had read through, each school has a comprehensive plan that they are supposed to enact, that has where they're failing, where they're succeeding. And it's that process, right? That is the thread that connects all of these things together. It's learning how to work through that process and solve those issues and seeing where we can solve, where we can connect, where we can help support. Um, my time learning about project-based learning uh is one of the spaces where I would really strongly lean into. So for example, I mentioned this a couple of times before, John Harris, uh unfortunately, their civic scores are extremely low. Um, I believe it's only twenty-six percent of the students pass their civic exam.
So the civic, the civics education exam, there was a large amount of failure at twenty-seven percent? When it comes to our kids' understanding civic engagement and education?
Absolutely, no, twenty-seven percent passing, so that's fair.
Passing, okay.
Yeah, um, so it's understanding that need and seeing what kind of programs we can do, what kind of community integration. How can um, how can we as council support and connect the work that we're doing with the school district? There, I know they're working on trying to build back a youth committee. A lot of these things, and I want to let people know, a lot of the ideas that are out there already are the ideas to be enacted. But it's the next steps, it's actually going through and following through with implementation. That is the skill set that I think needs to be in city council in order to work together and create and follow through in that programming. And that's also utilizing that experience that we sent with YPOC. Um, everything we do and part of that organization, we've done with the, we've done a lot of things with the school district. We've operated and adopted classroom program and as a nonprofit. As a state entity, we put together MOUs that have connected multiple things, right? From the city, from the school board, uh, and that's the type of work that being in city council, facilitating that connection. Hey, what does an MOU look like? What is the expectation from council? What are we providing? How are we making sure that funds go to the appropriate nonprofits or the appropriate for-profits that are helping supplement our school district? Um, and it's doing that work in a systematic way. That's the, that's, that's really what I'm gonna be bringing. And the skill set that I'll be bringing and the energy that I'll be bringing is how those things are connected. So again, fundamentally, comprehensive plan has implementation kind of costs over chapters. It's understanding that there are other plans that exist that we should be engaging with, pulling metrics out of and identifying, you know, ways that we as city council could, uh, could implement. Uh, youth programming, could utilize, you know, the, the CSAs, could utilize other, you know, other functions of city council. Um, I see one of the things I won't, you know, we, we don't have all night, but one of the topics that we probably should have a completely separate discussion on is the police department getting integrated into the Harrisburg school system. That is going to put us by the nature of one member of city council being in charge of public safety where the police department, the chief, should be reporting metrics to that person, aligning all that data to make sure we're holding the police department accountable for what they're doing in the school district. And all of that's gonna start intertwining moving forward. Um, if that, if that plan, and I believe that plan is pretty well set in motion, so I don't think there's any backtracking on it. So that plan is going to happen. So the way that we as community members should be engaging with that is through city council because again, that police department is, you know, reporting through city council.
I like that. So simply put, I think it's the idea that wherever the people are being served, city council still is able to be at the heart of making sure that there's at least some type of checks and balances and collaboration. And city council, although they are not the, the firm hand over the school district, because that's the school board, there's still plenty of opportunity to not only provide resources through grants and partnership opportunities, but there are ways to support the community members and organizations that are already doing the work in community to help offset the cost of what they're doing in a community. So contrary to popular belief, there is a way for city councils to still work and be a part of the community because it will all translate into the work being done in schools and communities and within um organizations. I want to jump into your um platform a little bit. I know that when we discuss city council, there's a lot of candidates. Um, and we do encourage civic engagement and everybody running to be able to be a council person or whatever they aspire to be. What is your vision for the city? How is it different than the individuals that have run in the past or even currently? And what do you see the vision of Harrisburg becoming um, should you get a position for city council?
So, should I get, should I get appointed to city council? The first thing is a cohesive and consistent vision. And that's why the number one item on my platform is actually utilizing the comprehensive plan. Um, I was doing some research, the, the plan that is on city council's website is still in draft. Within the last section of the comprehensive plan, there is supposed to be at minimum a yearly review of updates and metrics.
Well, hold on, let's get going. What is the comprehensive plan, Bossier?
So, the comprehensive plan, it's, it is a tool, it is a document uh that, that lays out and, hold on, let me get, let me get my, I might, might have to get a little cheat sheet just to make sure, right? It is.
So a lot of times we talk about these documents that exist or already exist but aren't in motion. So I want to make sure that people understand, is this a new concept? Is the comprehensive plan something that's already been in rotation? Like, where are we with this plan? What is this plan?
Yeah, it, it, it is not a new concept. It actually should, we actually, unfortunately, since nineteen seventy-four, that was, that was a lot of time before twenty-twenty, the city actually adopted a comprehensive plan. What it is, is it's supposed to be a strategic document that provides a framework for the future of the city. Um, and it's supposed to be forward-looking. You're supposed to look forward five, ten, fifteen years and um, and um, and really work through and figure out with community data. There's a lot of work, like, the city spent a lot of money to put this plan together. So once again, this is not something that I use, this is part of city planning. It is supposed to reflect community values and you're supposed to anticipate the needs, wants and desires of future generation and provide a roadmap for that group.
Hold on, when you dig deep into it, let's break that piece down, because that was a lot. So twenty-twenty was the last time that we created a comprehensive plan where the community could look towards the future and create future thinking models in a, in a space. And before that, it was nineteen?
Seventy-four.
So nineteen seventy-four was the last time before twenty-twenty where we collectively and comprehensively looked towards the future. And then in twenty-twenty, someone said, hey guys, let's look towards the future again, um, just to see what we're.
But, uh, alright, again, we, we don't have all night and I, we created a YouTube series, a Facebook series. I will share with people, because we broke down the history of the comprehensive plan. Um, yep, and uh, this, this was, so actually, Rafika's throwing in a little bit of history. Brett Peters was the original, uh, um, the Office of Planning, uh, wait, OPA, was his company that got awarded the contract for the comprehensive plan. I'm gonna give a brief history, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rush through this because politics got involved, right? So there was a previous mayor, and this is back in the Papin Fuss era. There was a previous mayor that did not like the way that some of the suggestions of the comprehensive plan laid out, some of the really restrictions to developers, some of the things that you're laying out as guidelines. So there was pressure to not go with that plan, then that caused a lot of turmoil. So between like twenty-sixteen and twenty-twenty-one, there was just back and forth about who's writing the plan, whether the contract would be continued, uh, there was a presentation, it was, this was a mess. I went through a lot of history of Harrisburg. I watched previous community sessions on how the, how the plan that Brett Peters put together, he did a lot of work. And, you know, some people would still critique his process, but there was a process that included the community. And the community, actually, the output of that plan was a very well-structured document. I actually sat down with Brett significantly, he did, he helped me understand how to break down this document. There was a website that was uh actually really engaging compared to what's available now for the comprehensive plan. Uh, there was a lot of work put into this previous plan, but again, I'm gonna have to yada yada this because we're already at twenty minutes. And we, we could spend a whole, a whole lot of time going through this history, but that plan was not officially passed by city council because the mayor adjusted it, then they didn't agree. Then there was a whole lot of back and forth. Um, the last city council member that this plan was in the hands of pushing forward and getting all the way through was actually, you know, now our current, current state rep, uh, David Matson, he was actually a city council member. And, you know, they finally got this plan put together, again, drafted in twenty-twenty. It wasn't until twenty-twenty-one where it finally got passed to actually at least be a passed document. Now, since it's been passed, unfortunately, I have not heard, like, in the planning commission, yes, they, they occasionally throw a bone to the city, to the, well, you know, as in the comprehensive plan. They occasionally throw a reference to it, and that's probably the group that utilizes it the most, but that is not a yearly review as it's supposed to and as it's laid out. And, you know, on a later session, I can, I can go through all the working sessions and all of the promises and amendments. There was not one amendment that went through and um, what we're seeing now is me actually holding back a little bit of frustration because um, you know, myself, Winnie O, there's a huge group of community members that did a lot of work trying to um engage with this plan because that's part of it, right? That's part of implementation is how do you engage with the community and actually make this a living document? And we were doing that work, we were doing that work actively and a lot of that work was ignored. So I know, you know, for those community members out there who know about this history, I know, I know the plan doesn't seem like it'll work because it's not been utilized. I know it feels that, you know, hey, this, this is not a process that is functional. It's, it is, and that is right, it is because there has been dysfunction around this plan for the last, well, literally from nineteen seventy-four till now. So from Mayor Reed till this current point in time, we have not successfully seen what a, a really good vision, projection of the vision, but more important, continuous implementation of a plan looks like in this.
So it sounds like, A, people know about this plan, it's not a secret, it's not a thing, it's just something that people kind of reference when it's necessary or appropriate. And B, it seems like it's something that is, should be used continuously as kind of our blueprint or at least a checks and balances of are we on the right track? Is what we aspire to become as a city going according to plan? And this comprehensive plan is something that since nineteen seventy-four and twenty-twenty um has kind of fallen to the wayside. You and I talk a lot about this idea of when all of these great plans come into the city, where do they go, right? And being able to say like, oh, remember that one thing we were really passionate about two years ago? Whatever happened to that, right? So making sure that we follow the passion with um persistence and progress is really important because we come up with a lot of great ideas in the city and we have a lot of leaders that present great ideas and then they don't go anywhere. So they only sit, right, that what happens to a dream deferred kind of thing. So I think it's important for you to make reference to the history of things so that people know that things have been brought to the table, things have been presented, things have been slaved over and worked over and they're just not moving because people have not moved it forward for whatever reason. And then let's identify why things haven't moved forward, right? So that we can do what we need to do to address the barrier to progress and then keep it moving. Um, you talked um a lot about the comprehensive plan and I want us to be able to have the audience reference it. So if you guys are interested, Bossier would be more than happy to plug away on his council page, um, the YouTube uh link, so that if you are interested in following along to what he's talking about, because it is a lot. Um, being able to reference it, uh, because I don't want people to not look into it because we don't have enough time, but I want people to be able to know where to find this, this document that's been existing. Talk to me a little bit about um your vision, right? If what you're seeing is you want to be a council person that helps to move things forward, let's talk about what Harrisburg looks like now and what Harrisburg can become based off of your vision for the city.
Absolutely. So Harrisburg unfortunately now looks, it, it, it looks stunted, right? And I say that with, with the utmost admiration of the potential that exists. And you can see it by, it is represented in the buildings that go underutilized. That's everything from your William Penns, um, you know, to, to the cycle of the bridge. I know there's work going on there, on and off. There's uh buildings on Front Street that go uninhabited. Uh, there, there are, there are locations that go underdeveloped. And a lot of that has to do with some of the economic development pieces that go along with how do you build and how do you grow a city? How do you identify the needs of the community? How do you understand and identify the resources and begin to utilize them? And I don't think there has been a consistent and capable process of constantly mapping out those resources and then putting together and executing the plans that would actually get us to fundamentally use them. So little things like Reservoir Park, little things like City Island. How do we actually make sure that residents understand, hey, what? How do we help residents gain the capacity to utilize these resources? That is something that we can help fill in the gap. And I don't think that gap is being filled. A lot of times we get reactionary, right? We find out someone has utilized the space on City Island and they're following a process that exists. And they're sending messages to your city council and those members are not, the plans are getting approved because things aren't happening, but then later there might be this feedback, well, how did this person get this opportunity? To me, what a leader does is make sure that, hey, these opportunities are known, but then also let me show you a pathway, let me guide you, let me show you how to get this, how to get this done. If there is a question on how to utilize a resource, we need to make sure that that question can be answered so that people can utilize these resources. If there's a nonprofit that needs support, we need to be drawing these connections. And that's something that I only see small bits and pieces of. And being at a seat like city council, you have this opportunity to draw together various organizations and actually utilize them to their focus. And that's what I see, it's underutilized city. Right now, I see so much potential, right? Forty-nine thousand people, this city can be up to ninety thousand. And to systematically get there, you don't get there overnight, right? You have to get there by coming up with a process and figuring out step by step, hey, what's missing? What is stunting the growth? What are the obstacles? Then you have to find a way to measure what that is and then put your money there and then seeing if that money is effectively being used and then slightly adjust. That is the process that is happening possibly, right? Ideas are coming and things are happening, but there is not this consistent systematic work that needs to be done to push us past these limitations where we're currently hitting. Because pro, right, and, and, you know, the military says it multiple, multiple things. Proper planning prevents poor performance and we are not properly planning. And that is what I see. Um, and the city is, the city is good where it's at, it really can be even better with a little bit of focused effort. And that's something that um someone like me, I believe, can bring to city council.
I like this idea that you talk a lot about transparency and making sure that the people understand what's going on, especially since you're bringing up this idea of the scores and how everything is um kind of not in balance with civic education and civic engagement. Making sure that we're transparent and educating the people as things are happening is gonna be super important. We have a question here from Raina, hello, how would you respond to those in Harrisburg that feel voting isn't effective or important? Thank you both for this information, it is needed.
Yeah, ah, that, that's a good question and that goes right with what we're saying. Um, I know a lot of people are frustrated. I know in the past, whenever I talk to people about voting, they bring up presidential elections. For those who are old enough, they bring up, you know, Bush not winning. Um, local elections are more important than your presidency, right? These are the people that a lot of the complaints that you might have, it's actually your local officials and the systems that work in there. The people that we put in these positions, they have a sign. The people that we put in these positions, they have a significant amount of impact on the day to day. On your parks, on your roads, uh, these are the people, even in the way that they interact with. The state and with the county on these other pieces, your local officials are your representatives for those larger battles. And that's who you should be paying attention to. That's actually who you have the most access to. That's how, you know, as a leader, I expect to open up my access to a larger amount of people. Um, I will say, you know, a lot of city council members do do a decent job in making themselves successful, some not as much. But you have the ability to reach out to your city council members, you have the ability to reach out to your mayor. Um, and again, these positions are extremely important. One of the things that, you know, I try to do is inform people of the reasons why these local elections are effective. Honestly, in Harrisburg, right, a city of forty nine thou, uh, forty nine thousand, I believe that, you know. Our target for this is only around two thousand two hundred, right? Which is a small number compared, compared to, um, what could happen, which means if more people begin to engage. People power, I'm gonna say this, this is something that, you know. It is one of the most important lessons of a previous generation and previous leadership that may have been forgotten. People power is some of the most powerful force in this world. It's people power, right? We power everything. Not voting disables your people power. And that's step one. I always tell people, voting is the floor. One thing I am gonna say, I'm gonna say this clearly, after, if I get elected, after I'm done. I'm not done with engaging with people power because then it's work after that. But what I will do is help provide frameworks, help provide direction, help make sure that people understand. Hey, these are the ways that we need further help. But that first step, that voting is, is extremely important because it's, it's not that many votes, right? A large constituent of people, um, if a large number of people decide to engage in this local election. Whoever, whoever can energize those people, they will win. And if you continue to connect with that council person, that mayor. Uh, that you can, you can make sure that your voice is being heard. So, um. It is, voting is very effective in, especially in an area like Harrisburg and it is extremely important.
I like this idea of people power because a lot of times when we think about council or this space of politics, people think that it's us. You know, providing all this power to a community figure and you lose your power, but really. You are the person that is flowing the people power to this higher level, right? You are taking, if you're doing your job well, a council member is really still representing the needs of this community. And is serving as that representative. Um, so I know a lot of times people feel that when that doesn't happen, there is really no point, right? Because their needs are still not being heard, um, but I like that you are incorporating the importance of voting. As a way to preserve, you know, power back to the people and power from the people in order to be able to do your job effectively. Are there any other questions that came up?
No, uh, the comment on, you know, and we're figured talking about the comprehensive plan yet, unfortunately, again, sitting on the city shelf. Uh, so, you know.
If you were to become, um, a councilman, can you explain briefly to the people, um, that may not know? What would you, would be your idea of how to best move things forward? Is it in the form of a, a town hall? How do you apply pressure to the administration to be able to get things that are dusted and sitting on the shelf? To revitalize those, those ordinances or those ideas and plans to get them in motion?
Um, so first, it's utilizing the language that currently exists, right? At minimum, there should be a yearly review of where we're at with the comprehensive plan. We should identify metrics in various areas because, uh, this, this comes up and. I'm, I'm going to talk about the city budget, which is the other process that myself and a group of community individuals worked on. Before we even get to, uh, the process like the city budget, which ends up being. A little bit of a mess every year, it begins to be a mess because we're not starting from a strong floor. So the first thing to do is implement the yearly review minimum. And then, yes, throughout the year, engage and create listening sessions. Um, community engagement sessions, public meetings to, to, to discuss the progress. Gather input and ensure the transparency of this document, right? The things that are happening need to flow out, the information needs to flow out to the community. Yes, there's city council meetings, but then we need to make sure that there is enough content that's being. Uh, put out there so that people can gather the information of where we're at. The mayor needs to report specific metrics. I believe that, that question was asked during this last budget cycle of where your metrics are. And unfortunately, they were not ready at the time, which if I'm city council. That is going to be, that is, that is going to be a line. I'm going to hold whoever's in that position accountable for at least. Setting metrics. At the very minimum, we're going to set metrics. Now, the goal of the community session is to see if those metrics match where the community feels and where they're at. And then potentially adjust those metrics, but we gotta at least have a basic metric, right? That's dollars spent, that's projects completed, that's, that's areas reviewed, that's DDE contracts offered. That, there, there's, there's plenty of things to pull, there's a whole document of metrics, right? One of, one of the first things that I'm gonna work on behind the scenes, I'm gonna put a lot of stuff, I, if anyone knows me, I love putting things in spreadsheets, right? Spreadsheets help my brain process a large amount of information and that is something that needs to be done, right? We, we need to organize each chapter, each action, have a potential plan. And lay out where things are going to look like or what things are gonna look like to build up into that plan. Um, and that, that's, that's gonna be, that's going to be a major part of what needs to be done, right? But that's a leadership skill that I learned from manufacturing. In manufacturing, decisions weren't made unless you showed. Your previous metrics, right? Hey, what were the, what was the goal? Where are you at? If you're less than the goal, why? And what are you gonna do to close that gap? If you're greater than the goal, why? And where are you gonna close that gap? What are the obstacles to get to that gap? Is it capacity in the city, right? Yes, we want the city for any project, we want a certain percentage to go to DDE. A lot of times, that's where it stops, stops, right? It stops at this lip service. Where someone says, well, yeah, I'm gonna meet the DDE goal and say, hey, good job. No, that's not enough, right? If you're not hitting the DDE goal, what is the challenge? And how can we put our resources and funds to close that gap? To build capacity, to make sure more companies are ready to take on contracts, if that's the issue. If the issue isn't that, how are we gonna create more networking events? A lot of times, city council leaves this to other people to kind of drive. And therefore a few words get said and then we kind of yada yada over it and then we just move forward.
Not the yada yada part.
I'm, I'm trying, again, you, you know, the, the, this is, uh, one thing that I do, like. I, I watch the council meetings, uh, a lot and, um. You know, a, a lot of the energy that you're gonna see coming from me is coming from observing and, um, providing. For, you know, really providing feedback from where city council is now. And that's how we lay out measures, how we follow up, how we ask, and what it looks like to hold people accountable. And the public is the, the, the key piece for people to be held accountable. There should be no reasons why if a metric is not, if a metric is laid out there, hey, we expect someone to return that data. And we expect someone to return that data by a certain point in time. And if that can't be done, we need to understand why and how that's gonna get done next quarter. If we get better at holding people accountable, then we provide updates over. Then when something happens, when there's a delay in a project, it's not a surprise a year later. It's, hey, we know this, but here is our action plan to close this gap. These are the words, these are the tools that I've utilized in manufacturing that I don't hear being utilized. At, 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 in, in a major way, right? I hear sometimes the first part, oh, hey, I have an issue with no metric being done. Okay, how are we closing that gap? Let's, let's document that action, let's make sure we put it up there and then bring that back next time. Again, sometimes things are done, but in a very unsystematic way and what I'm gonna bring is systems.
So you talk a lot about systems and your vision for moving the city forward. There's a lot of the kind of the engineering, breaking things apart, looking things, looking at things and putting it back together. Uh, which I love, but the reality is a lot of this stuff can go over a lot of people's heads, right? So I think a lot of the work that city council does can be both simplistic to some people. But also as you're describing it and really talking about how deep it is, it's not just as simple as, you know. Going out and doing the simple things, right? So, um, thank you for bringing up the fact that there's such, there's so many layers to city council. That sometimes we romanticize a lot of positions and we think it's just like, oh, going out shaking hands and kissing babies. But there's a lot of work and a lot of, um, things that are occurring in the city. That really needs to be tackled from a more systemic, um, future thinking kind of framework that I don't think we oftentimes hear a lot. So it's really refreshing, um, to hear. How do you think, um, I'm gonna get into a couple of like hardball questions. How do you think you, um, relate to the everyday person in Harrisburg City? And if you don't feel like you relate to the everyday person in Harrisburg City, what is your commitment to try to understand, um, the different audiences in Harrisburg?
No, I, I, I definitely think, you know what, I will say this, I am lucky, I have been lucky. And I have been lucky enough to have a mom and a dad who always reminded me of how privileged I am. Right? Like, and, and I, I will not, you know, if anyone ever, you know, challenges you, no, no, I'm, you're like, look. I have both, both my mom and my dad, you know, both, both alive and well, uh, you know. Uh, that, that in itself is, is, is a gift and I never look things that are gifts, right? Cause I know people who are not as fortunate, right? Um, I was lucky to, 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 to grow up in New Jersey in a, in a, you know, a place that actually reminds me a lot. Of Harrisburg, but I also understand that there are certain environments and situations, um, where people grow up that are not as blessed as mine. And I, I always try to acknowledge that. I start out with making sure that, you know, I don't think I'm better than anybody. I think I got, you know, I got the luck of the draw, right? Like, I didn't do anything to get a lot of the privileges I had. So I say that when, you know, when I tell people like, hey, I graduated with a degree from Penn State. I don't think like, oh, I'm so much better than anybody. I'm like, oh, I have the privilege of having parents who really didn't give me an option, right? Like, they, they're like, we're going to college, right? So I got to see it. And a lot of times I understand that people can't see these things, they don't see them for themselves because. The people in their lives don't put those visions in front of them. So if you wanna say like why I might feel like, you know, I don't think the average person gets that. And I will say that I'm, I, I am different, you know, because of the opportunities that I've been got, that I've been given. Now, one thing I'm gonna do to close that gap is one, I'm not gonna look at those things as, oh, you know, I'm special above anybody else. I'm gonna look at, hey, what opportunities are not given that I can help move more people to get it, right? How can I lift up more people to get the opportunities and be as blessed as I? Right? Especially with doing that. In order to do that, I have to meet people where they're at. I have to meet people where they're at and I have to listen. I have to go through and, you know, a- anyone who knows me, I spend time, I try to spend time, you know. Walking around the city, riding my bike around the city, talking to community leaders, engaging with people, right? I, I've been interacting with people in this city for the last, like, I'm gonna say ten years heavy, but I've been out here for fourteen years. But honestly, those first, those first two, I was going to work, I was going home, not really much community engagement, right? And that's, that's, and I also get that, a lot of people are stuck there, right? I got lucky, I had a very, you know, the friend that I was working with, it was actually through the Foundry Maker space. Um, I got a chance to learn about the comprehensive plan. A lot of people don't know, it's not like, oh, I'm right, I got this document. No, um, shout out to Rob Schulp because before I created videos, he created a wave of videos, right? And he was, you know, he was involved in the creation of the plan, he is an architect, very brilliant mind. Very good community engaged person, you know, used to, used to live in the heart of the city. Um, he, I, it was a privilege getting a chance to meet him. And the relationship that I built with him is the type of relationship that I've built with several other community leaders. Sitting, listening to them, hearing the problems and then reflecting on that. Reflecting on that and trying to engage in a different way and then constantly looking to change my worldview. If anyone wants to know what my superpower is, I, I will try to reach out to as many people as possible and understand where they're coming from.
That is your superpower. I think one of the things though about you, Busier, if I may, is that, you know. There, usually when we're in a city and you go off and you, you know, acquire this certain level of education and you come back. It could be hard to reconnect in communities like that. And I always tell people like you're not really on just this, this, the, the tonality and how we sound and how we talk. Sometimes it gets misconstrued that there is a disconnect to the city, but like you said, like, no, I'm from Jersey, like, I get it, right? So, um, being able to be in spaces where you can connect where you grew up. And how you're understanding life and the, the wonderful privilege of education when you come from spaces. Like a Harrisburg or a Jersey for me, is that you always get to see the other side in the vastness of the world. And then you come back to your city and put people on game, as we say, right? You're able to say, this is how it works, y'all. Like, I know we, we didn't get it and we don't understand it, but this is how the other side lives. Or this is how we can get it to work and we learn it to bring it back, right? So I've seen you in the community, I've seen you in, in all different type of spaces, I've seen you riding your bike. I've seen you at different community events, so I think if you all want to get to know Busier's heart, just like follow his page and see where he's at. He's in all of these different events, um, and the work that you do is always around education. So when people don't get it, you're like, there's a PowerPoint for that. When people don't understand something or they wanna understand a process to acquiring what it is that they want. It's almost like your eyes light up because you're like, this is an opportunity where I can educate someone and give them the tools that they need. To be able to function and get something done, so I applaud you, I applaud you for that because I think that that takes a lot of patience. Um, being able to understa, knowing and having all those skills is one thing, but being able to. Get someone else to understand how to do the work by walking them through it is a superpower. Um, and I think a lot of people don't recognize that we first have to become knowledgeable with all of these skill sets. And that's the time that it takes us and then we have to be able to provide different ways to give that information to people. How do I get it visually? How do I get it on paper? How do I get it across a website or PowerPoint? So you're kind of the jack of all trades in that, um, how do you see, um. How do you see the relationship with Harrisburg City and Dolphin County currently as it stands? And, um, how do you, what do you think as a councilman you will strive to, to continue or change in that dynamic?
Yeah, so i- 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 it starts with accountability and, you know, uh, anyone who follows me know that, knows that, uh. You know, I've had a chance to meet and, you know, interact with Justin Douglas, um, I see him out there doing a lot of good work. Um, I've had a chance to interact with a lot of the commissioners and, you know, one, that's one thing that I'm gonna bring, right? Like, it, it, it is the previous relationship with, uh, a lot of these people who are, who are in these positions of power. And being able to one, communicate what's needed, right? Guess what? The county has a plan as well and they're looking for people to engage and help, right? Not in this quid pro quo way, but in this actual functional way where, hey, guess what? Harrisburg is in Dolphin County, so if we succeed, you succeed. Hey, here's how these dollars are spent on tourism. Guess what? We gain more tourism, you gain more tourism. Here's how, if you help us with our plan, right? And again, now we're talking transactional, not in this bad way, but in a functional way of, hey, Dolphin County. You have dollars to spend, let me align with how our plan sets a vision for the future. So that you know that your dollars are well spent coming through the city. That is the connection that really needs to be, that, that, that really needs to be made. Is that, hey, we're gonna systematically, you know, build on this, right? Because guess what? The state has a plan, the Environmental Protection Agency has a plan, Dolphin County has a plan. I'm, 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 I'm the type of person, I'm gonna not just read them, I'm gonna engage with the people who are sitting at these seats. And we'll see where there's alignment, where there's wins, wins, how does this flow? That is, that is, that is what I'm gonna bring to. That is, that is, that is what I'm gonna bring to that relationship. So I wanna, I definitely wanna uh do that.
I heard you say existing relationships, so I was just gonna ask like a flat question. You have a relationship with the current administration. You you have positive relationships with people in the community. There's a ton of candidates that are running. One of the things that people always want to know is, are people gonna be able to tell? Do people know each other, right? Um, it sounds like you're saying you already have previous relationships with commissioners where you've been able to have conversations. So they would know you by name, right? Um, and as well as some of the the other candidates, you know, you're running and supporting some of the other candidates. So I think that's another thing to be able to point out is that it takes a while for relationship building. And thinking that we always have the time to create this relationship um can be damaging to the progress. So it's refreshing to know that if you were to start day one, you would already have these relationships in place so that people will know who you are and being able to say like, oh, okay, yeah, Basir. And then you can come to the table already ready to do the work more than being able to kind of work around the who are you, what do you represent, things like this. So I think that that that's an important piece. Um, talk to me about a time where you, oh, let's get some shout outs. Amos said, I've known Basir since twenty sixteen. I have no iota of doubt about your love for the people, but more importantly, your competency. You have a good system thinking, understanding and how to bring about clear and measurable outcomes. I did see that Senator Patty Kim had a comment.
Oh, yeah, uh, you know.
Great on council, thank you.
I wanted to shout out to Patty Kim. I remember one of the first times I got to the privilege to working with Patty Kim, it was actually, um, um, I'm gonna mess up the name of this organization, but it was, it was the P A STEM ecosystem, right? Where we're trying to build that competency and capacity um within the city and within the region. Um, so again, another project that 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 we worked through that's connected to uplifting people. Um, I'm I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna make sure I give a shout out. If we want to talk about a key individual, I'm gonna shout out this this lady right here, Patricia Robinson. Her program is super important to the future of the city, right? And when you you ask, how are you gonna connect the school district and what we functionally do and a vision? Getting people into the trades, that is, that is, you wanna know what's the what's the what's the hidden key to unlock a lot of the city's resources? It's connecting um people like Patricia Robinson, people like Joshua Barker. Um, and every other program, it's doing work in building that capacity. Um, you know, our neighbor next door, uh Mayor Dent, uh, you know.
Is a core piece in serving them, absolutely.
Right? We're working with, working with various cities. So again, we we should be working together that 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 it's something, you know, that 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 we have this opportunity to do that. Um, you know, Amos, I would.
Even though city council members individually do not write out for grants and programming, I also think that it's important to understand that Basir's background in understanding grants, the city of Harrisburg can compete for grants. And when you're creating that and getting those grants, a lot of those grants, right, Basir, ask for how we're going to bring in community organizations. So just like the the CSA program, shout out to the CSA program. Being able to literally write the community into the plans of the city is something that's doable, right? But again, I think it takes the know-how, I think it takes the desire, I think it takes the passion to be able to understand how to bring in all this revenue into the space and to big up people like um Ms. Robinson, who's been doing amazing work, right? And other people in the community. And you being able to identify those people in the community because you have those relationships in the community. It's not about saying like, well, if we had all these resources, where would the money go? You've been in the community, you are president of a organization that works very closely in our community. So being able to connect those dots, once again, day one, I think is something that, um, you're not gonna shout out, but I'm gonna shout out for you because I I find that important. And our leadership's ability to get to the bag and bring the resources into the city so that we can pay the people that are already impactful in our community. Your thoughts on that?
Uh, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it into also connecting and keeping going. Cause uh, this woman right here, this Rafika Mohammed, I, she reminds me of my mom. So I always had an affinity towards Rafika. But um, I'm gonna, I'm 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 gonna tell a story that that also connects to this uh, this work that I've had an opportunity to do. But also comes full circle, which is understanding how previous initiatives have failed in the past. Because if you know about, you know, different spaces that have been utilized or underutilized in Harrisburg School District, we should have multiple functioning greenhouses, right? We should have a project-based learning initiative that is connected to nonprofits like Engazi who that that do the work in this city to help build up, um, to help build up, you know, homegrown farmers, to help build up the capacity to grow what's in the earth. This is something that Rafika provides, she provides it currently through the Y N C A and all around the city. It is such an untapped resource that if you, again, unfortunately, politics, personal problems get in the way and those things separate, right? And and that's the, that's the work, right? That that is the work that I have spent time doing, which is building relationships and trying to understand where do these grievances start and how do we close the gap? How do we address them and make it appear in sunlight? How do we make sure that we put things forward, the whole people accountable? Um, you know, working with, I did have a chance to work with Rafika and through Y P O C where we did work, where we tried to organize multiple communities, um, Harrisburg Urban Growers, to try to get money from the EPA in order to fund capacity building for uh for growing in the capacity to grow in the area. This is work that can still be potentially used at any uh given time. So opportunities like this are, you know, abundant in the city. But we need people to to bring the right pieces together. And that's something that, you know, my experience has led, can lead me to do. Um, and I really hope to people watching this and other people's support because that's that's the energy that I want to create.
So I heard you talk about the youth with the work that you do with the school district. I heard about your desire to connect across the city and being able to bring those resources through um city council in a relationship with city. I heard you talk about Dolphin County. Um, I heard you talk about the work that you do around manufacturing, Y P O C. Let's talk about the senior population, right? So one of the things that I think city council um is moving towards is making sure that there's a balance in the audience that it serves. Um, and currently, there is a space and opportunity to bring um the seniors that have paid their dues, that have done their due diligence in this capacity to keep this community and maintain this community. How do you, as a city council member, see yourself honoring this um unique um population, right? And how, if any ways, will that tie into the work of the youth and bringing them into adulthood? Um, obviously to things like Y P O C, but how do you see those two groups connecting in the work that you're about to do, if you are elected?
So so it's multiple ways, like, the first case is understanding resources and mapping them out. Again, we talk about this budget process where there's an argument in the budget in terms of where dollars go versus, hey, here's this map of resources for the seniors. Here is our plan for how money should be distributed. We should clarify that so that we're not spending time. You know, one, one of my biggest pet peeves is we spend a lot of time arguing about smaller. We argue about things that end up being more of, hey, is this center doing a good job? Like, yes, it might be, but we have a set of city resources that should be going out to the entire city. But instead, there's an appearance of more of a relational, well, this person knows this person, so this person's getting fun. I wanna take that away and I wanna put things in spreadsheets. I wanna put things out in the open. And then again, hold people accountable. If there's this many dollars that are associated to go to this space, let's make sure that happens. Now, the other piece is understanding the career pipeline, right? When you're talking about, you know, supportive services for elderly, that is a career. That is a career pathway, that is a career pipeline. So, yep, just as much as I shouted out, um, you know, Patricia Robinson, there there is nursing programs that do the same thing. There is elderly care programs that do the same thing. And if you, you know, some people, if you want a job, that is a job pipeline. Um, over where I'm at, if you look over where I used to be, when I first moved out here, over in Mechanicsburg, um, there there is a very robust elderly care system that has a variety of housing units that are mixed housing, um aged housing that, you know, if you're the type of elderly person who needs very little assistance, you can live in those areas. There's places all the way up to, hey, you need a lot of support and continuous care, but there's a more robust area like that. Pennsylvania as a whole is the highest recidivism rate of any state. That means once you live here, you're more likely to die. Not in a bad way, in a good way, because we should be having enough supportive services to stay here. Um, and that's something that, again, utilizing the systems to make sure that there is a direct, uh, you know, there's a direct support that's based off numbers, right? Right? Like, there is an elder community, there is a percentage of people, there is a percentage of voters. There's a percentage of taxes, there's a percentage that should be given. And if we lay out a plan, we can make sure that the appropriate amount of dollars are distributed according to a plan and not fought over constantly.
I like your answers because they're so refreshing and I like how you say kind of stepping away from relationships. Not stepping away from relationships that you know will help, but not simply just looking at relationships as a prerequisite for favor, right? So I think one of the advantages or disadvantages, if you will, to not necessarily being from here, even though we make a large point about being lifelong residents, is that you can come in and not necessarily fall into this forty, fifty, sixty year span of the 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 nuances and the layers of the iceberg of what's been going on. So you've done a really good job, like you even just said, is let me identify what politics went into or what feelings or emotion or what background and history went into this thing. And now how can we break that down, find resolution and move forward, right? It's because the work has to be done. How do we unpack the layers and see how to best move on um through conflict resolution, through planning, through accountability, so that the work continues to move forward? So I like how, what you said about this relational thing and this concept that oftentimes kind of creeps his head into decisions that are being made, but saying that there's nothing wrong with having relationships with people, right? But how do you still maintain the metrics of accountability to be able to justify it outside of just, you know, this is just a relationship that I have? So that was a really good point. Um, it was gonna lead into my question of, what do you think are the pros and cons for people who say, you know, he hasn't been a lifelong resident here? He doesn't understand the nuances of the things that are necessary to make decisions. What are some pros and cons that you think just personally, being here for a while, but not lifelong, of coming into a space um and then trying to represent that space?
This, this, this. It's important because it 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 goes into the core of what diversity really is, right? Before diversity became a bad word, it is about how do you take a variety of experiences and then respect those experiences and grow to something better, right? No, I'm not born and raised in Harrisburg, but I am now part of Harrisburg. I I I bring my history and because of that, we as a city, right, can move forward stronger with my experience. And I feel that with every other person here, right? If you've been born and raised here, you have a deep, rich experience that is important. If you just came here last week, you have a deep, rich experience that is important and you can grow up. Right? Now that goes to what, it it, if there is anything that is, that is about this country that is special, it's that. It's our ability to mix a large number of people, right? From diverse groups and come together and make something stronger, right? And we are stronger as a whole than we are as individuals. And if we embrace that diversity, if we embrace the value of the experiences we get from, hey, you came from overseas. Okay, cool, let's, are you here now? Let's use that experience. How can we be better? Hey, this works slightly different here because of these root reasons. And let's not think that, hey, I can come here and make this this thing, right? Oh, hey, this is gonna be just like this other place. I I used to learn this because it was the same thing in manufacturing, right? There was always a manager who'd come to a new factory and they would bring up their old factory and all the workers would be like, no, this isn't that factory. And it not, it's not, right? There's different nuances, there's different strengths, there's different weaknesses. And that's why I have a leader. And that's one thing, you you need to come and meet people where they're at and then evolve from there. So that that's how I think that 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 kind of experience works and moves together.
Okay, yeah, I agree. I think diversity of thought, diversity of experiences is what's gonna help shape it because we're not all the same in Harrisburg, right? We're not all coming from these different experiences and it's good to have that diversity of thought and experiences in city council. Um, Patricia says there is some, there is some much available abandoned property to rebuild for displaced youth. I think that's a huge concern the city could improve. How can we get that done through collaboration? Thank you.
Absolutely. So it it it, it's about laying out what is, what is needed, right? So there, again, looking at the comprehensive plan and mapping out these properties, identifying the prop, the for-profit spaces and the nonprofit spaces who work in this area and then making sure that they're empowered. So Patricia, I know your, 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 your program is is a great one that we should be in, we should be used in conjunction with, where it almost begin to build organizations like yours and others into the comprehensive plan of how can we set a project? How can we set an expectation for any of these spaces that need to be reworked? And if we need to take steps back there, let's figure out how we utilize and do capacity. Um, you know, I I um, um, I have to bring up, you know, I'm, I I I had the opportunity um to to interact with Becky Jainer before she unfortunately passed away. And, you know, her initiative with the Front Porch Project was a perfect example of a small project that we should bring that energy back and that focus, but put together a plan that can be executed where we utilize resources from younger contractors to do something small first and build that capacity until we can actually have full-blown organizations. Right? When there's contracts, uh, just, when, when, when there's contracts for these larger businesses that are becoming, right? Um, Rapid Transit has this huge project. It was just announced yesterday at city council. When they say these D B E goals, identifying what are the supportive services to me to get certain people at the table so that they're building capacity in our youth, so that they're ready. Yeah, yeah, Patricia Robinson remembers that project. So it's, it's replicating that, right? There are, there are a lot of people that, you know, again, I I got here a long enough where I was fortunate to meet some of these people, you know, before their untimely, you know, before their, before their untimely, you know, sicknesses or other things that happen. And it's about taking that energy and, again, not recreating the wheel, but taking that focus and getting the right people at the table to sit down and put together a plan. Hey, here's how we're going to reutilize the space. Um, the, the old Hudson Building, the Atlas Building, right? I was engaged in that project. That's another space where there's plenty of opportunity for development. And again, the bridge was a space, or is a space for development. I wanna, and this goes back to working with the county, working with the state in order to figure out, all right, how do we create this pipeline so we have the capacity to execute? And that's the gap that I want to fill um as city council, is making sure that these people are one herd, that if there is a gap to getting funds to support and supplement these programs, if that's done, that we're making sure we're pulling the right people in and we're not, you know, yes, we need to reach outside when it's needed, but we reach outside to close a gap and then our goal should be next year, we don't have to reach outside, right? We should be growing the numbers of capacity inside. And that's something that I always do. Any plan, there's a capacity building section to that. That's how you close metrics. And guess what? That's job opportunities. That's a huge economic unlock. I guarantee you, if we, if we don't have enough electricians, which we do and we can figure that out, but if we, if we don't, we can build that capacity and that will feed itself, right? That will help us with renovation projects.
And going and coming and going and every year it's like, oh, we're not getting it, we're not getting it. It's like five years go by and you can use those five years to better equip people, right? Young people will become adults. So equipping them through programs like Ms. Robinson and getting people ready so that when the opportunity presents itself, we can ask for a higher minority spend. Because guess what? We have in-house programming in the city. We have in-house programming in the city that can step to the occasion and can compete for this space. But we cannot compete where we do not exist. So how do we create and develop so that, yeah, today maybe they're outside. But maybe in the next year, once we put all those systems, like you say, systems in place. That next year, we have a pool and an abundance of people to be able to choose from. Even that idea of blight and all of the different things that council has to deal with, right? So trash, blight, all of these different situations, public safety, all of these things have an opportunity. And I I bet you have a grant or a resource that can help us to tackle. How do we close the gap of disparity in our own city? So that people in-house can take advantage of it. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about us being in the capital city, right? So a lot of times when we think Pennsylvania, we think Philadelphia, some people think Pittsburgh, all of these other areas. Um, how do you believe that city council can play a role? In revitalizing um Harrisburg City so that it does become or remains an attractive. For people to come visit and not just drive through or pass by? What is the city council's responsibility that you think um or what role can you play in that?
So along with creating a vision and a plan, it's letting people know what makes the city thrive, right? Um, I love talking about Hershey because that's connected to manufacturing. And I always tell people, you gotta find your chocolate, right? You gotta find that source of revenue. But we know now in modern times, you can't just have one, you gotta have multiple. And that's something that, you know, the 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 comprehensive plan is four hundred something pages, right? It's complex for a reason because it's not just one industry sector, it's multiple industry industry sectors. Um, I, you know, within the, within, you know, sometimes a a picture is worth a thousand words. I'm, I I'm, I want to see, I'm going to bring up one small picture, right? This, this is doubles of industry, right? Where it's mining, we do live in a capital city. So a lot of jobs are in healthcare, they're in government, the um, some are in management. Assessing what that looks like and ensuring that we have programs to get a variety of people into different spaces, right? Is everyone going to be a painter? No. Is everyone going to be a carpenter? No. There's some people that want to get in the film, right? So empowering community leaders like John Trey Williams and supporting the 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 Film Commission in this area. And saying, hey, how do we utilize programs like that and connect them to what we're doing? Um, understanding how all these things are together or how these things string together. And create different industries and making sure that, hey, we focus on an industry that's cute. Harrisburg University has a tremendous manufacturing program, right? Advanced manufacturing, you can learn about P L C logic. We can take any of multiple versions of these of these places that are, you know, basically abandoned. And repurpose them in in manufacturing development centers. And guess what? You, if I say that to the right person from the county and from the state, I guarantee you there's dollars there. Because we want to be manufacturing capitalists, right? One of the, one of the new waves of energy that's going to happen, right? One energy, but one of the new waves is going to be, hey, how do we get goods? How do we manufacture things? My history in that and that is going to bring that as a pipeline of jobs. So it's taking advantage of all of these value streams, identifying the resources of Harrisburg. And then connecting the people to those resources and showing them that they're opportunities, right? It's not just one pipeline and that's one thing, a lot of people get tunnel visioned on one idea. The 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 benefit of someone who can think strategically about a larger plan. Is I can show you several pipelines, right? Yeah, we can make, we can make sure that we're distributing. A good, a service, a beverage, you know? We we can, we can work, I know you're close to it, I know, actually no, I know you were one of the, you were one of the co-authors in a plan to have a brewery out in this area. So reaching out to people like yourself and saying, hey, what are the gaps that prevent us from doing this, right? How do we close that? How do we get you the funds that are needed? How do we connect you with the right people? How do we build that capacity? If we weren't ready now, how do we do that? How do we partner with Harrisburg University and get advanced manufacturing so you can have someone who graduates from there? Not go off to another place, which they're usually promoted to do, right? So you have, you have the capacity being built here, then it gets shipped to other places because that's where manufacturing is, right? Um, it is, it is identifying the resources and pathways and being able to use what we have to build greatness. And we have a lot of greatness here. But it's it it's concentrating it on different industries, looking at trends, looking at rising. Um, looking at rising opportunities and making sure that the people who need to be in that space are in that space. And we're aligned under a cohesive plan.
And I like what you said about this idea. First of all, did y'all see that he just threw up something in the middle of his PowerPoint? Stop playing with him, okay? Um, literally, because it's like we're we're ready to think and being prepared. So I just want to identify and point out the little small things that matter to people, right? You just had something, you're like, I just want to show a picture real quick, okay? Um, I think that that's what it is, is that when you're in a position or wanting to be in a position like a city council. Or a mayor or any of these other spaces in political system. You have to understand that there's more than one way. And how do you strategize and how do you look and how do you not become defeated if you go this way and it doesn't work? You need someone to be able to think critically and think, all right, let's rework this and then let's go this way, right? Because if you don't have that, right, as a natural kind of component to leadership, you can become stuck. And then we have people that have or things and ideas that have just been stuck or sitting on a shelf for ten, twenty years. Without movement because it really requires critical thinking, right? Um, and I think that this is an exciting time for council. I think there's a lot of individuals on council currently, um, as well as candidates that are attempting to come in. That really have this this intense desire to really think critically through things. And to not just let things slide by and happen because that's just how we're used to doing it, right? To be able to say, until this makes sense, this doesn't need to pass through, right? Until we can get clarity and accountability measures, this isn't going to work, not as a disservice to the community. But as a way to start in the beginning, if we do it right in the beginning, we don't have to then try to backtrack to make things right. If there are systems and spaces of accountability, right? So a lot of the language that you're using, um, I see already existing council, um, people such as the um. Danielle Bowers is working through things, right, and thinking critically through things. Um, so just when you as viewers are looking for candidates, um, examining how. They would gel and align with existing council people is always a good approach to the thinking.
Absolutely, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a moment, make sure that, like, yeah, if everyone who's enjoying this is, it lots of thumbs up and loves it. If you have not, please stop by Culture and Co, stop by Elementary Coffee and sign a petition. For me to be on the ballot, um, whether it be myself or other individuals, we'll also be going around and canvassing. Um, so we'll be looking out for you, um, I'll be going there around to different places. Um, unfortunately, I had a very badly timed vacation, so I'm not right now, um, you know, locally. In the area, which is why I'm doing a remote connection, but I will be back shortly and I will be hitting the ground. But if you, if you have the opportunity, um, several people are out there helping me, um, you know, helping and representing. Um, I do want to give a shout out to the slate of candidates that I'm running with. Um, we are talking about collaboration and, um, you know, an individual that I've worked with very closely, Elise Irvis. Who's running for city council as well. And then another individual that I've just recently had the opportunity to work with, um, Andrea Grove, she's also running for city council. We are running as a slate together because, you know, we sat down, we shared a lot of ideas and we, um. Come from a lot of similar, you know, similar mindsets and we have the ability to work together and a little bit of history working together. So I wanted to make sure I threw that out before the end of this because otherwise, you know, some people might get mad at me because I'm not used to this politician thing yet.
Oh, no, yeah, he has no beef, so we don't want any new beef. Um, and I think that's important to identify that you you have the ability to run in a slate. Because you do have relationships with individuals and you do believe in other people, right? So there's really nothing wrong with being able to acknowledge that, you know, there are a lot of several, there's different number of seats available. There's four that are available, correct?
Four seats, so if you, if you've already signed for petitions, you can't sign for me, you can only sign up to four. That's also an important thing to know. So if you have not signed, you can sign for four city council seats, one mayor seat. Um, also just cross across the line, Latasha, um, um.
William.
For Williams, for uh, for Jeff, for Judge. And then, um, you know, uh, our, you know, we we have the mayoral race, there there there's lots of other people. So I I I appreciate you, Patricia, I appreciate you, thank you for, um, you know, thank you for tuning in. Um, yeah, and we'll definitely, I'll definitely be looking out for you. Like, you know, we we've talked in the past, we've had a chance to work together. Um, we we actually worked with Ms. Rafika and we built a composter um with some of the students that she had, it was a great project. Um.
Well, I do want to thank you for, even though you're on vacation, right? Getting this process and being committed to being able to introduce yourself, have some conversation, answer some questions. Kind of break down and give us a teaser of that comprehensive plan. Um, so if there's no other questions that are popping up, I'll give you the opportunity to give kind of a rap. On why you think people should um pursue um signing your petition. And then supporting you in the long run for a seat um as a city council member. So take it away with your closing thoughts, Basir.
Absolutely, so first of all, thank you anyone, everyone for tuning in. Um, I want to make sure that, uh, you know, I I thank all the community members. I know a lot of people tuned in, I've had the opportunity to work with you. This is a space that, uh, this is my first foray into politics. And I am a a student of leadership and I love. This city, I've fallen in love with the city and I think that I can do a lot of good work for the city. Um, I am always open to questions, I'm open to feedback. And that's one of the things that makes me good at what I do. And I want to do what I do for the city of Harrisburg, I want to make things better. I see a great vision for Harrisburg, I see a great future for Harrisburg, but it is very important that we put the right people in leadership. And you have the opportunity, you have the opportunity to select your leaders this cycle. And now with everything going on in the world, this power is more important than ever. One of the first questions was about people who did not vote. Um, it is literally the floor of what we can do for community engagement. And, you know, I apologize if something has happened in the past that has made you disengage, but it's a different time now. And I want to engage you, I want to bring you in, I want to make sure that you are part of the system. Because we don't do this by ourselves, right? We 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 can't, none of this, this isn't a Basir Vincent Show, right? Like, I'm not going to be able to do this by myself, I'm going to need a team of people. Um, if you're interested in joining my team, you know, please also stop by uh Elementary Coffee. I don't have my own office yet, um, stop by Culture and Co, let people know that, hey, I want to help out Basir, I want to help canvass. Um, again, important dates, uh, I gotta get enough petitions to get on the primary on May twentieth. Um, after that, make sure you come out for the November election, so those are the two big days. If you are not registered to vote, please register to vote now, right? It's not too late, okay, I'm not, register to vote, right? This is, this is the time, if you, I haven't been registered before, register to vote now, right? The future is now, we can, we can, we can turn everything around today and then we can set a vision, right? It's not going to happen overnight, but if we don't start today, then we're going to be another further behind tomorrow. So let's start today, let's register, vote, let's engage, let's find ways to improve, right? I will sit down with you, I will lay out a plan for whatever your focus is. There there's, again, there's a lot of sections that we did not talk about tonight, there are a lot of topics that we didn't talk about tonight. And there are a lot of things that need to be worked through, right? I don't have all the answers, but I was fortunate enough to have access to a lot of the people who engaged in this chat today. And they they helped me inform, right? So what I'm saying now is not just, you know, I'm not coming with it off the top of my head. It's actually from a lot of years of listening and responding and I look forward to keep doing that and keep growing. And I believe that if we do that all together, we can grow as a city and we can do something that, you know, no one has seen before. And I'm really excited about that opportunity.
Okay, you guys, so you heard your call to action. Make sure that if you guys have any other questions, if you want to know more about the comprehensive plan. If you want to ask them how to spell his or say his name again the right way or anything that you want to know about Basir. Um, he's already in the community, but there are going to be some concentrated events that he will be at where you're able to ask him questions. Uh, make sure that you sign his petition if you're interested in him being on the ballot. Um, and as always, if there's any other additional things, I'm sure that he would appreciate you all just sending him a a private message. Go respond accordingly, um, and then just check him out on social media and and outside because he's outside. Um, so thank you guys so much, Basir, thank you so much for your willingness. Enjoy the rest of your vacation before you come back and hit the ground running and thank you all for tuning in.
Night.
Good night.